I provided the name, contact information, the amount to the county administrator with the recommendation to verify the local effort and match that was required to be provided to schools. The schools got the same information. What justification was there for providing $1 million more above the requirement? The entire budget process, from a board standpoint, as seen by citizens, was all last minute. Apparently, the discussion made by Mr. Rourke had little impact. Waiting until June 27th to get answers is like any citizen that asks questions from where I stand now. There is a clear indication that the budget process isn't understood by several board members. Asking critical questions three days before the fiscal year ends makes folks wonder why they didn't ask those questions months ago. The process didn't start in June. Now, let's set aside the lack of understanding of the budget process, since we'll all experience this handiwork, and ask yourselves, which of you followed up to ensure citizens' questions get answered? Even when given direction from the chair, nothing happens. No follow-up. Why won't one of you simply ask if questions raised in the last meeting were answered? Those of us who come to these meetings, ask questions, don't expect to be ignored, yet we are. The board gets the same treatment despite giving direction to respond. The board's ignored just like us. No follow-up, nothing. When speakers come before this board, their words simply fade away. Finally, back on the budget. I've learned that the current registrar is four courses away from achieving certification. Apparently, certification means different things to different people. This board provided funding for a deputy, an assistant deputy, a trainer, and two students. A dramatic increase in funding. No previous registrar was provided that much assistance. Can we be optimistic? Or will the unintended consequences of the four favorable votes add to the despair already being experienced in the county? Thanks for listening. And before I sit down, I want to thank Mr. Costin. He did call and make an attempt to answer one of my questions most recently, and I appreciate his efforts.
Richard H. Ingram, Jr.?
Madam Chair, members of the board.
I don't.
I'm back. I decided to do something a little bit different. I wrote out some questions, thinking, and I know you can't answer them now, but here they are. Who is on the committee working on the comprehensive plan? Any person from outside the county? Who is working on rewriting the renewable energy ordinance? Any person from outside the county giving input? Whose idea was it to create a two-mile-wide swath from the Nottaway River to Crewe, and from Crewe to Fort Pickett, and from Crewe to Burkville? Did solar companies suggest this, and how did they get to have input? Is the county administration pushing the idea of locating solar industrial sites in rural areas? If so, why? Have any of the county administration, board of supervisors, or planning commission members met with solar companies, their attorneys, or lobbyists for solar? If so, what were the subjects of the meeting? Were perks involved, dinners, lunches, et cetera? Is pressure being applied to county administration, board of supervisors, or planning commission to put solar industrial sites in rural areas? If so, by whom? Have promises been made to any of the above or their families concerning monetary advantages? You know, that's a big issue in Charlotte County. Are you prepared to pit neighbor against neighbor, or county landowners against out-of-state or out-of-county large landowners who want to put industrial solar in rural areas? Have any other solar companies requesting to put these sites in rural areas, have a decommissioned one? If so, what was done to the used equipment, the panels, et cetera? Were they recycled or just trashed? Was the land where they were located restored to the condition it was in before the sites were placed there? The soil, topsoil returned? Trees planted? Grass and shrubs planted and fertilized? I've been reading a lot about this, and I don't think anybody can tell you right now what the cost of decommissioning one of these things is going to be. Whose estimate is it? Are they taking inflation into account? Who's going to pay for it? I hear this thing about these bonds. Hey, in 20 years, those bonds are not going to be where they have what they are in that way things are going. The other thing is, one in 10 recycle, cost is not economically feasible to recycle these things. And there's some questions for you. How many of you would want one of these industrial sites within 500 feet of your home? How many of you would want one within 300 feet of your property line? Would you be concerned about runoff? Would you be concerned about the water quality in your well? Would you be concerned about the temperature increase around your property? Would you be concerned about the value of your property decreasing because one of these sites being located next to your property? I picked this up today. I sent it in the article I'm emailing y'all. I don't know whether y'all read them or not, but anyway. This is a gentleman from California, solar energy expert and CEO of Recycled PV Solar. The industry is supposed to be green, but in reality, it's all about the money. Thank you.
How y'all doing today?
How you doing?
I'm the chairman, members of the board. They could allow me to speak. Here today to talk to you about water. I know it's a big deal around here. And specifically, the intentions of the state actors in this water, some people call water war that's going on. You know, somebody shows their true intentions when they provide this board with a motion to consider. And in that motion, it says, hey, this is what we want. Now, this entire time, Prince Edward County said they want to run a water line into Burkville and take the state facilities over in Crewe. But their motion says that they want to have the authority to take any water customer into account. And it goes back to what Blackstone's been saying the entire time. They want to come in and take Fast Sea and the apartment buildings or Viewmap. And so, and then let's talk about other bad faith things that the state has done. You know, when this started, they reached out to Blackstone, and they said, hey, you know, we want to, you know, move our water facility somewhere else for the state facilities. Can you provide us water and bypass Crewe? Blackstone said, well, we won't bypass Crewe, but we have the amount of water to supply, and we can work something out. Blackstone spent $27,000 to do studies and research for them, and told them that their rate was negotiable when they came up with a final rate. And what happened was, the state went to Prince Edward and said, Blackstone said the rate was not negotiable. And so, you know, you have to work with somebody who's going to be upfront and truthful. And not only that, Blackstone has been stuck with the $27,000 bill. The state brought the proposal. Blackstone spent the money. They sent an invoice. The state told them to kick rocks. Why would we even be considering doing business with people like that? And if the project itself is going to bankrupt our neighbors, and then also take business from, you know, our towns, our main water supply in the county, I don't understand why we'd even be talking to these people, and how we haven't encouraged the towns to work this situation out here. On top of that, you know, why not pass a motion that allows Blackstone to provide water to anywhere in the county? I mean, if it's good for Prince Edward to put that motion forward, why don't we think about that here? That would actually allow Blackstone to come up with options for the Cox Road water lines. Well, you know, and I know Mr. Vaughn says he's waiting on some financing stuff, but Blackstone can't even look into project or financing or any kind of planning without even getting permission to run the line. And those people say they're desperate, need a war. Trash services. As a town of Blackstone City, and I'm now paying two costs for trash services. A $3 meter fee, and then now I'm sure my bill may go up for the cost of the, you guys jumped from zero to, was it 47?
Forty-two.
Forty-two per. And I'm wondering, how much the town saved the county in collecting trash services? Because technically, if the town said, well, hey, that's a big jump from zero to 42, we're not going to offer trash services anymore. Everybody take it to the convenience centers. What cost would that put on the county? How much overloaded would the convenience centers be? How many more trucks? How many more people would you need to run those centers? And I'd like to see you guys talk tonight about figuring a way out, because people who are already paying the town double because they're paying for service, plus they're paying you for use of landfill, shouldn't have to pay even more on top of that when their neighbor doesn't have to. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This concludes the delegations from the public. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing relating to redistricting ordinance. Mr. Costin, will you provide an introduction to this for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, excuse me. Was it Mr. Tatum signed up?
Did I miss? I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, he was.
Mr. Tatum, please accept my apologies. Dennis Tatum.
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
How you doing? I just think that solar panels in Nottaway is a good thing to keep the taxpayers paying so much more taxes, like I said in the last meeting, to help with the school protection, the police departments. Other counties are taking advantage of this, and I think Nottaway needs to do the same. If you put it in the right place, I think it's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Madam Chair, to the matter of the public hearing, this is a public hearing required by the Code of Virginia to, for the board to consider a redistricting ordinance, which will set the polling places in election districts. The board, and I hope many of the folks here will recall, that we began this process in the early part of this year, and it involved, I'm sorry, I had a timer on. It involved naming this board as the redistricting committee. And it extended that partnership out to the ex officio members, one representative of the local Democratic Party, one representative of the local Republican Party, a representative of the NAACP, as well as our registrar, Mr. Reynolds. There were several work sessions that were aided by the Commonwealth Regional Council that was able to display online, so folks could watch from home, how we moved various census tracts around to create the districts. It was quite a different approach this year. We were challenged by the fact that laws changed, and the populations in the prisons were not counted unless they met certain criteria. So, the numbers drastically changed, and it created a demographic disparity on one of our election districts, Election District Three. The committee, the board, worked through that and developed an option that met the demographic criteria, so that each district is approximately within 10% equal in population. And that result is on a map that's actually on the wall out in the lobby. From that map, an ordinance was drafted, which listed out in what would be known as a meets and bounds manner, where each of the districts would fall. Now, the matter there is that that is reflected in the map, and you have to just kind of read through. It literally is brought out by census tract borders, it's brought out by road borders, it's brought out by natural features such as the rivers. So, that's all laid out there in the ordinance that you have before you this evening. The one item that I would like to clarify is, there's been some speculation and questions about when does this ordinance take effect. The last full paragraph of the ordinance reads, and it be further ordained that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption and enactment by the Board of Supervisors in Nottaway County, Virginia, and upon issuance of a certificate of no objection pursuant to an order from the Office of the Attorney General of Virginia. Should the board adopt this ordinance this evening after your public hearing, then the materials that make up that demographic information, the map, this ordinance is ready to go by our attorney, Mr. McRoberts, and it will be sent to the Office of the Attorney General. And once the Attorney General signs off on that, makes that finding of no objection, at that moment in time, the ordinance becomes effective. I know that there was an earlier draft that stated it was retroactive to January 22nd that has been taken out, and it's been reported that it actually becomes effective January 1 of 2023. That is incorrect. It is with the board's action this evening, should the board act this evening, and then finally with the action by the Attorney General's office. It is somewhat critical, the board asked that this matter not be considered in the same month as the budget. So, we're now in July, and it is somewhat critical that the board act as the registrar has to prepare for a special election in Election District Three. I'd be happy to take any questions the board has at this time.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Costin?
No.
No.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right. We have a, all right, we have a motion to open the public hearing relating to the redistricting ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any registered speakers this evening? Anyone here wants to speak for or against this matter?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Yeah, I know, it's me again. I'm sorry. There are 63 days till the first vote is taken in September on the 23rd. Now, this public hearing is required, not to solicit ideas or concerns or reasons for changes or anything similar. It's simply being held because it's a requirement. Now, Mr. Costin just read the last paragraph of the ordinance, that it shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption by the board once you get a letter from no objection from the Attorney General. Now, I'm pretty sure that you have in your notebooks how long that'll take. We can guess how long it'll take, but it'll be a guess. And why do I ask? If you read the Courier Record recently, you saw my mugshot on the front page. I currently live in District Three. Depending upon when this adoption happens, I could be moved to District Two. And it won't happen tonight, after you approve this. It'll happen, whatever the date is, that the AG comes back with that no objection letter. But I have until August 19th to submit documents to run for that seat. If I have no idea, and you have no idea when the AG is going to send it, do I live in District Three or District Two? Am I allowed to run or not? Those questions need to be answered. I can guess, but guessing doesn't work. We do have a clear understanding that if I were appointed to the seat, and I jokingly said, well, I'm one of three, the Code of Virginia covers what happens if I get appointed. But to get on the ballot, I have until August 19th. Now, those are personal reasons. Moreover, why wasn't there a computer-driven redistricting plan? You go back in time, and you don't have to go back that many years, we used to have more than one type of example of the redistricting plan. And I'll ask this in all seriousness. Why do we only look at the 1988 lawsuit? Why don't we look at some that are more current? One most recently in Maryland, or the Supreme Court decision in 2016, written by the extremely conservative Justice Kagan, that deals exactly with the same circumstances that happened in 1988 here in Nottaway? Things have changed in 34 years. I'd appreciate being advised as to the conditions that I presented tonight. Is redistricting impacting my ability to run? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this matter?
It's me again. I agree, Mr. Abbott, we're in a tight situation. There's also other tight situations, such as new voter registration cards need to get sent out to all voters in the county, so like 9,000 people. On top of that, we have this special election. He's right about some of the issues, but either way, this plan needs to put forth. Maybe the board or the county can attach maybe a letter to the Attorney General, let them know of the special election, the circumstances we're in, and ask them to expedite a response. That may be a good thing. On top of that, I still feel Mr. Abbott could probably run, or seek legal options, you know, an injunction, those types of things, or if a registered voter wanted to challenge him in that district, they could do that. But it doesn't change the board on what they need to do, because we've already pushed this redistricting really to the edge for the registrar's office to be able to prepare for the election, and the new school board seat didn't help a lot, so we really need to get it up there. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? All right. Will entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Just move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. Who has suggested motion in the package? Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance that's before us?
Madam Chair, having met the required advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing on the proposed redistricting ordinance and related map, which this board has given significant time and consideration to, I move the Board of Supervisors, Nottaway County, adopt the ordinance before us this evening titled "An Ordinance for the Appointment of Members of Nottaway County, Virginia," Board of Supervisors, to establish boundary lines of the election districts thereof, to name each district, to establish polling places for each election district, and to establish a centralized absentee voter precinct. Madam Chair, I second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. To Mr. Abbott's concerns there, is there a legal answer that we should be seeking legal advice to his questions there? Because what my concern is, is if this does put him in a situation where he can not run, does that put the county in a legal situation?
That's the issue that Mr. Abbott thanked me for calling him back on last night. I confirmed my answers this morning that it's all, it's very much about timing. If Mr. Abbott, if you all act tonight, Mr. Abbott is appointed, I understand, tomorrow night, then he can take the seat, and when the Attorney General's office changes, gives us the certification of no objection, he holds that seat until the special election. The winner of the special election, once they certify, then he is no longer the representative in Election District Three. It becomes whoever wins the special election. His question is slightly different, so I'm going to have to defer to counsel as to how this affects his, certainly seeking, you know, seeking to be a qualified candidate.
Because of the ability to qualify work for office and the timing requirements that are set by the election laws, our office is glad to advise the board with respect to that and conference capacity. Otherwise, it's almost, at least from a professional responsibility standpoint, giving legal advice to a private citizen. But certainly glad to provide that information to the board, and the board can deal with it what it will, will look at it first thing in the morning.
Any other discussion? All right. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes as presented. Okay. So, we're going to move on to presentations. Mr. Costin?
Yes, ma'am. If I could find my list, we have three presentations this evening, and I have buried the list. I apologize. Here we go. We have a five-year certification or certificate to recognize Sally J. Krager, Literacy Director for the Library. I don't believe she's here this evening.
Yes, she is. She's right there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Come on up. If you all stay out closer to the podium, you'll be on the camera.
Oh. Sorry. I'm not experienced. Okay.
A certificate of commendation presented to Sally J. Krager in recognition of five years of service to the county of Nottaway and its citizens issued this 21st of July 2022. Congratulations and thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We have a 10-year certificate for, everybody knows him as Wayne Mainten, one of our maintenance workers. I don't believe he's here this evening. And we have a 10-year certificate for Gary Easter, landfill operations supervisor, and Mr. Easter is here.
Certificate of commendation presented to Gary A. Easter in recognition of 10 years of service for the county of Nottaway and its citizens in solid waste management issued this 21st of July 2022. Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulate to both of y'all.
All right. We have Ms. Jackie Green August and Tammy Oaks from Total Life Center with us tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Madam Chair and members of the board, we would like to thank you for this opportunity to share with you the Whole Foods program. The Whole Foods program just finished its fourth successful distribution in two months. Jackie and I would like to provide you with more details. You should have an informational sheet in your packet.
The Total Life Center helps families address barriers and obstacles of life, which prevent optimal health and well-being. The Total Life Center engages people to take an active part in managing their health through education, participation, and advocacy. We view community health through a holistic lens, taking into account income, education, employment, health literacy, family and social support, safety, transportation, and food. The Total Life Center is a place where people can live and learn today and plan for tomorrow. The Total Life Center is a place of healing and hope.
Food insecurity is important.
Food insecurity is important to us, and we have set the table for our neighbors.
We'd like to introduce to you the Hope Food Program. According to Feeding America's MAP meal, the average meal cost in the U.S. is $3.13. In Nottaway, it's $3.05. That means there is an annual budget shortfall of $1,505,000 in Nottaway. The annual meal shortfall reflects the average additional amount of money per week that a food insecure person is likely to spend on just enough food to meet their needs. Now, according to the U.S. Census, there are 2,964 individuals living in poverty in Nottaway. And those are the people that have reported. There is 19.2% of the total population. This equates to 45 school buses lined up back to back. The number of people reporting food insecurity would fill 29 school buses back to back.
HOPE is an acronym for Helping Others, Other People Eat. The Total Life Center Southside Virginia has partnered with Feed More. Feed More is a food bank that collects, prepares, and distributes food to neighbors in need across 34 cities and counties in south-central Virginia. Total Life Center also partners with two local nonprofits, Peace and Arms of the Light Ministries. And both of those nonprofits provide resources to Nottaway County. Feed More's mobile food pantry, powered by Kroger, distributes thousands of pounds of food to people that live in food deserts and unresourced areas in their service region of central Virginia.
Okay, so on average, during a food distribution, families receive at least 35 to 40 pounds of food. This includes produce, five to six items, such as potatoes, carrots, and cabbage; protein, one to two items; literally, almost seven pounds, including turkey, ham, and chicken; grocery, five to seven items, beans, soups, oatmeal, pasta; and then there are one to two bread items, loafed bagels, muffins, or sandwich bread.
Yes, the average distribution serves approximately 345 families, with a total of 730 individuals. With the breakdown of 40% of adults ages 18 to 59, children, 0 to 12, is 28%, and seniors 60 and above is 32%.
To date, we have provided 23,782 pounds of food we've distributed in our four distribution dates. The average is 5,945.6 pounds of food per distribution.
A few words from our our neighbors here in the county. "I cooked the cabbage and made homemade spaghetti that same night. My grandchildren ate all of the food and left me a few spoonfuls. It's a great program, and I love it." And that was from the senior here in Crews of Code.
As a school teacher, buying groceries is hard and very limited after I pay all of my bills. I thank you for this opportunity. This was an adult in the Blackstone area.
The workers were really outdoing themselves. You are all terrific. Bless you, an adult from Crews of Code. A special note of recognition to Joey Schnapp. He has been there every single distribution. He does so extremely well managing the vehicles, the transportation, managing the traffic for us. Not only Joey has been there every distribution that we have, but we also have partnered up with several other individuals and businesses that have supplied some volunteers for us.
There has been Southside Electric Company, Nottaway County Public Schools, Black Diamond Social Club, Blackstone Rotary,
the Town of Crew, Citizens Bank and Trust, STEPS, the Crew Baptist Church, the Crew Volunteer Fire Department, as well as Jade Out Creative, the VDOT here in Nottaway, and Sova Rise from Farmville.
According to the independent sector, the national value of each volunteer hour that they provide us is worth $29.95. With 77 volunteer opportunities, this equals
$119.80 for four hours. And that gives us volunteer costs back to the county, $9,224.60 for our program.
Our next distributions will be Friday, August 5th, and Friday, August 19th, at the Hackney Beamer Ball Field in Crew. Distribution starts at 12:00 noon, and it usually runs until 1:00. And registration is required.
Our mission is to improve the quality of life through engagement, education, advocacy, and holistic health.
So what's next? The Total Life Center is seeking sponsorship for equipment and supplies to continue serving the Hope Food Program participants.
Total Life Center is also seeking assistance with a permanent facility to provide programs and services to Nottaway County residents. Now, we'd like to open it up to the board for questions regarding our program.
Madam Chair, if it's okay, I just wanted to let y'all know that I had read this, the information that was in our packet, and I had reached out to members in the Town of Crew, and they are currently looking for a location. And we have identified one that we do not want to say until we get all pertinent information. But we thought it was viable that you should know. And fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions, but you are doing a wonderful job.
You really do. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I had the privilege of going and kind of catching the tail end of one of their distributions. Very well organized.
Yes, sir.
And then one Friday, I looked around and go, "Where's Buddy?" And Buddy was at the food distribution. So that's the Nottaway County employees that are listed there, so.
We'd like to thank you for this opportunity for us to tell you about our program tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we're ready to move on to department reports. We have Ms. Bryant, Diana Bryant, Assistant Residency Administrator at VDOT with us.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Costin. I don't have a lot of updates over and above what's in your packet, but I did want to update you on a few things going on with some of the projects in the county. The Route 460 Bridge right out here at the courthouse. I know you've seen the forming there on the pier. They're actually going to be pouring that tomorrow. So hopefully, that project's going to go ahead and be moving along a little faster than it has in the past. The Route 46 project, it looks like that may be delayed a little bit longer. They're having some issues with the steel fabrication. And like I said in the last meeting, the contractor wants to wait until he has a definite date of delivery before he does anything with the road. And I wanted to let you know too, because the detour seems to be a big discussion. Detour signs will be installed, and I don't want anybody to get excited because they'll be installed and covered prior to the detour going in. But before the detour ever takes place, we will have signs out there to notify the public that actually commute on that area when the detour will be put in place. So there'll be plenty of notification. But I just want to let you know that the signs will actually be installed prior to that, but they'll be covered. The project, the bridge project at the Route 609, it's at the county line there. That one is a little bit delayed as well, but they are planning on pouring the rails for that on the 26th. So that one's going to be a little delayed opening, but just want to let you know about that. The surface treatment is still, it is complete. We still have marking to be done and some sweeping. All the slurry seal is complete. We still have to install the markers, and we have to do some repair on 619 on Tyler Road in Crew. And the latex on 640, that is also complete, but we still have to install the in-laid markers for that project. And that's all of the additional information that I had over and above. It was in your packet. I did want to ask if there's anything else that you want to see in addition to what we provide for your packets, to let me know. But do you have anything for me?
The information you provide is very thorough, and we appreciate these reports, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Grimes here tonight?
Uh-uh. I don't see her.
Mr. Hyde, do you wish to speak to the report on, from Emergency Services? Mr. Buddy Hyde, our Emergency Services Coordinator?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Costin, staff, and citizens, only if you have questions, Madam Chair. I just do want to add something that is not in your packet. As of today, yesterday, we are prepared with the heat advisories. We are on the border of a non-heat advisory. It looks like Brunswick and Dinwiddie and everybody to the east is actually in the advisory, but it is a concern. So what we have done, and you can share this, is the county website has notices on what to do in terms of keeping yourself safe and the Facebook page. So we'd like to just direct people to those two mechanisms. And tomorrow, we will be updating the Facebook page again to see what national weather says on Friday and Saturday. At this time, we've taken no action as far as any kind of stations, but we are prepared to do so. And we had a coordination meeting today for that. But as it stands, if we can just hopefully find a friend, find a family member, you know, that's what we're encouraging people to do, to just stay cool and everybody stay safe. But did you have any questions of me on the report?
No.
Excellent report. Thank you very much.
I didn't have one on the report. I was just going to ask you to be specific when you're talking about the stations. That would be cool, and stations in case something dramatic happens.
That is correct. And today, we identified we're going to use the same facilities that we had warming stations identified for. So we'll just be turning on the different season here and going with those same places. But we had coordination today.
Great job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Zodi, we have Greg Zodi, Planning and Economic Development Director.
Good evening. Before I start my report, I'd like to get clarification from Supervisor Rourke about what he was asking about. I wasn't following you at all about the solar.
With the solar, the status of the solar and how it relates to the comprehensive plan?
Oh, oh. A few months back in the meeting, we had a motion that went on the floor that passed. And it was either for 60 days or 90 days, but either way, it was to be brought back up. Since it was a formal motion, it was for this meeting. And it was, oh, God.
I'm going to spot that.
I recall it as Mr. Zodi reported last month that the timeline for the comprehensive plan, which was discussed just earlier this week, is somewhere as possibly going to a public hearing in October, as I recalled.
Perhaps a joint meeting if the board so wishes. And I could, if I could add on that?
If I just add, that was following the board's direction, that they did not want to do a separate solar-specific update to the comprehensive plan, that they wanted to do a incorporated into the full, ongoing comprehensive plan update. And so, that's on a different timeline. That's going to take longer.
All right, because it was just, just to be clear, as my memory comes back to me, I understand me and Mr. Bowen had voted against it, but however, I thought that the motion that was passed was to have the wording added to the comprehensive plan, and that wording be presented at this meeting. Because that wording has been completed.
That would be my mistake then, if that was the case.
That would be staff's mistake as well, because I feel like we're getting conflicting direction that you want it done within 60 days, but you want it done as part of the ongoing, larger-scale project. And one of the other...
Because I thought that me and Mr. Bowen had voted to, that we voted against it because we wanted the whole thing here.
That's correct.
And I thought that the motion passed because they wanted the information provided within that 60-to-30-day window, which I thought was this meeting here.
In subsequent to that, Mr. Zodi came back and said it doesn't work that way.
Okay, that was my COVID missed meeting.
No, 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 no.
That's true. That was your COVID meeting.
I wish I had COVID then. But I will say, Mr. Rourke, in all due consideration of the comprehensive plan process, at the, I believe it was the May meeting, I brought up to them, I drafted language. I presented to the comprehensive planning committee, which by the way, is comprised solely of planning commission members. Okay, just so there's, nobody's consulting us or anything. People are certainly in my ear from either side of the issue. But I did present to them, "Look, we could do a spot amendment, which is basically just, okay, let's just approve the language, insert it in the comp plan, and bring it to public hearing." They chose to incorporate it into the comprehensive plan, the overall process.
And when you say "they," you mean the committee, the subcommittee?
That's correct.
Is that, Madam Chair, I have to ask for clarification. Is that going against what the motion passed for, though? How could the subcommittee overrun y'all?
Refresh myself on the motion to make sure.
Right. Because even though Steve and I voted against it, just, I feel like if we don't honor our motions, it puts us behind. If I was saying, if we were supposed to address it here, even though I voted against it, should we be, I just want to make sure we're keeping up with...
Do you remember, which meeting would we have made the motion?
It would have, I keep my mind up, it was April or May, but I'm...
Can we look at that and see exactly what the motion?
We'll have to go back.
It was very, I'll be very candid, it was a very confusing motion. And I had a bug injury today, so I stuffed a bite with chocolate.
See if we had it in these here.
But we have reviewed it, and we discussed it again at our comprehensive planning committee meeting Tuesday night as well.
Okay.
And as far as the map that I drafted, they looked at it, and there's no big issue. It's sort of just, okay, you know, let's focus on the language.
Okay.
But I'll bring that back up again just for transparency. Because when we have these, when we have the public hearings for the overall comprehensive plan, I certainly want to be transparent to the citizens, to the planning commission, and to the board as well about what we've been discussing. And Todd does an excellent job with that.
Right.
And just real briefly on the comprehensive plan, we just finished the goals, objectives, and strategies, that section. Then we have a few more items to go over. I believe it's, might be the glossary and some other items at our next month's meeting, on the August meeting.
I could have COVID hangover and be completely wrong. I just wanted to make sure we ain't getting behind, that's all.
Supervisor, no, no, we're still, in my opinion, we're still on track for the comprehensive plan approval. And having said that, Madam Chair, I would like to let the board know that I am working with the CARES folks, as well as Sheila, for the Petco grant.
Oh, good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, well, I have a gift for, well, verbal gab, but also a written gab. And I fill in the stuff that gives me some creativity, and I rely on Ms. Ortiz and Ms. Estes to provide the technical information for that. And to let y'all know, we aren't, we can't request an amount for the shelter. It's just, they will give us whatever they give us if they approve it, okay? So that's very important to know. So that's why I like to get very creative with my language and stuff and state the issues. You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Zodi.
Are there any other questions about other department reports in the package?
No, ma'am.
If not, we'll move on to constitutional officers. Ms. Hudson, is there anything else that you wanted to add to your earlier...
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Sheriff? Ms. Watchers?
I'm in report. Thank you.
Okay. Any other constitutional officers?
Could I let Ms. Watchers know something that happened today? Mr. Costin and myself went down to Dinwiddie to a little VACO meeting, and your letter was personally put in the hand of four VACO personnel and three delegates. I just wanted to... and your letter was personally put in the hand of four VACO personnel and three delegates. I just want you to know that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, more than. We hope to get you some help. We push forward.
All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Mr. Costin, you have an update on the animal shelter?
Yes, ma'am. I attended the last CARES meeting. They are happy to report, and this is an update as of just yesterday, $305,675 has been raised in their fund drive. We met with the architect. The plan is to present to you all in September some design options on the animal shelter, along with obviously the cost associated with those options. And the architect will be looking for is a commitment, if not maybe at that meeting, perhaps the next, as to which design option you want to pursue so that they could begin drawing up the construction documents. Those would be the construction documents that would come back to you for review before they go out to bid. And there were still some discussions about the timing of putting bids out for construction in this economic situation that we're in. That has also opened up the discussion about a donation policy. Should the, should a large contributor give any money? Might the board consider naming, allowing a room to be named for someone, or a piece of furniture, or a courtyard, or something along those lines? I have reached out to VACO, Virginia Association of Counties. They do a great job. I said, hey, here's what I'm looking for. They did a blast. We got about seven different versions of donation policies that different localities have adopted. So we'll be taking a look at those and bring that as a project, kind of paralleling the animal shelter. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I noticed about a week ago, an email update from the CARES committee, and they've exceeded $300,000 in their fundraising effort. That's amazing.
Yes. Great job over there.
Okay, we'll go on to new business. Item one, solid waste delinquent accounts. Mr. Costin?
Yes, you have a listing of accounts that are delinquent by more than, some of these accounts go back to 1999. There is a, the board, the staff at this time would ask for the board to act to remove those, to write those items off.
You'd indicated that the inability of the county to pursue beyond three-year statute of limitations. What, with what regularity do the collection efforts occur within the three-year period? What efforts do we make to collect?
We've, we're certainly taking a different, more aggressive approach in the last year. But I can't really say that there was significant effort to try to collect.
Any questions?
Is that the total amount, the $25,354?
Yes, sir.
And there's no other options other than writing this off?
These are too far out. We have no other option. We have to clear, it's necessary to clear the books.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to allow the county to, at their discretion, remove the $25,354 from the landfill account that are more than three years old.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, the motion passes and we approve the write-off of $25,354.
That's the word I was looking for, write-off.
Solid waste fees. Mr. Costin, do you wish to speak to this?
Yes, ma'am. The board has concerns about the impact of the solid waste fees. During my presentation on the budget, I had indicated that I was developing the budget around a policy that was presented to you. The realization of that impact is not going over well. So the board may wish to consider suspending, or it may wish to consider maintaining the policy as it's been adopted. One of the 52-some projects that was on the waitlist for me when I got here was a solid waste study. I have gotten some drafts of RFPs for that. I've had some consultations with our existing engineer. I believe it's more prudent to put this out to the market rather than just rely on our engineer. We get great engineering services, but to try to get a little bit competitive edge on a study, that is necessary, needs to go forward. Again, the board right now has an option. They can stand by these, or they can direct staff to reinstate the prior landfill fees. There is, there's a middle ground that I would like for the board to consider. This new policy has in it that the, we just wrote off $25,000 for not collecting fees. We've been more aggressive in trying to collect our fees, but this new policy imposes a 10% penalty for late fees. That would be an encouragement to folks to pay the bill. This policy also has some language in it concerning emergency closures and also the management of the landfill during emergencies. I know that the board had an issue post the ice storm and how it dealt with the debris coming into the landfill. This policy addresses that. And it would be, if it's in an established existing policy, you don't have to make a decision on it every single time you have an emergency that creates debris. And FEMA sees it as a, sees it more favorably, that you have an existing policy rather than something you did in an immediate response. So the middle ground would be to drop back all the pricing, particularly as it relates to the towns. And then, but at the same time, maintain the language as it concerns the collection of fees, the 10%, with the 10% penalty, and that's after 60 days in the emergency provisions.
Madam Chair, I wrote a statement, probably need to really read, but I just, I got it here. And I just want to state this for the record. The fact that the towns are paying an additional rate to have the same bag of trash thrown away and county residents are not, is tough for me. Town residents already pay county taxes to pay for the landfill and other services such as emergency services and schools. Then they pay town fees for trash pickup and delivery to set landfill, and now $42 per ton for household garbage. I'm not okay with that. Let's pretend for a second that the three towns cut the keys off to their trash trucks and stop picking up delivery, and stop picking up and delivering trash. What happens is, all those town residents, approximately 5,500 folks, then start bringing all the trash to the convenience centers and overrunning them. My 777 plan for those centers couldn't keep up with the flow of trash. The county would have to buy additional trucks, hire drivers, and the landfill would most certainly have to operate seven days a week. The towns bringing trash to the landfill is a huge saving to the county. This additional $42 per ton will certainly force the towns to respond accordingly to offset these additional expenses that the towns say they were unaware of and did not budget for. Blackstone and Crew is moving on plans and Burford, I believe, will certainly follow. The town's response, I believe, will create a shortfall at the county level, which means that either a tax increase or dipping into the reserves will be needed to offset the damage created by the county for adopting these fees. Lastly, we should not charge the town's citizens these increases without a study. The town citizens, since the construction of this landfill, have never had to pay these additional fees. And without those fees, the numbers were trending, as I understand it, in the right direction, even without, even once the additional flow of waste from the Afghan evacuee situation happened. And Madam Chair, with that, I'd like to make a motion for the Ottawa County to reinstate the prior fees prior to the adoption of the budget, maintain the election, the language to fee collection, namely leaving 10% late fee penalty, as well as the early closures, as the county administrator has stated.
All right, we have the motion to maintain the language, drop back on the pricing on this landfill fees. Do we have a second?
That's, excuse me, that's including the 10%, 10%?
The penalty? To leave that language in there?
To leave that in place.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Logan Presley is Human Resources Coordinator to talk about insurance renewal.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors, Mr. Costin.
Good evening.
I am here to talk about the insurance renewal for 2022 to 2023. As you all know, with the budget preparedness, we did not do a employer contribution increase this year. After we got into the budget and the process, we got last-minute notification that our insurance renewal policies are going to go up a 12%. That is not just for what employees would be paying, that's an overall percentage. So for an employee-only participant, they are facing a 231.23% or an increased monthly payment of $67.31. Also, if a person is on an employee and spouse policy, it is going up 23.27%, which is an additional $150.77 monthly that they would have to pay. This is if we leave it with no additional employer contribution. I am here to ask, or to give, three options that I have given in y'all's packet that we could choose from, where the increase goes all to the employees, which is shown with the 231.23% increase to the employees just for the employee-only policy. Or we can do the all increase going to the employer's contribution, or another option, which is splitting it 50/50 down the middle, where a percentage would go to the employees and the other half would go to the employer. If we choose to do the 50/50 split, where the increase would go to the employee or employer, the employer would be paying a extra annual contribution of $26,356.20. That's about a, I think it's 7.3% increase annually. With the additional contribution, it would bring the employee monthly increase down from 231.23% to 97.36%, which would bring that employee's increased monthly payment from $67.31 down to $28.34. So this is why I'm coming to y'all to ask if y'all could look at the three options and kind of make a motion to see if we could get any extra employer contribution with the insurance renewals.
Logan, I don't mean to add a sour note, but as I recall, there was a big push last year for us to move away from an insurance broker that was maintaining limited or no increases because employees were so dissatisfied with that. So now we've moved to this situation, which this is a significant increase.
Yes, and we didn't get this notification until late June, or middle to late June.
So what's going to be staff's response as far as due diligence and getting out new RFPs for insurance services? Is it going to be a timeline for that? Are we going to seek to, are we under any kind of contract with this broker?
Currently, we are under contract with a broker for three years, so our limitations doesn't go out until 2023. We have notified them that, you know, we were not happy with the service because they did not do additional shopping on their part like they were supposed to. Also, we have, you know, we kind of looked on our end of what we could do. We do not have enough time to do an additional RFP to get another service right now because the new enrollment will go into effect September 1st. So when I do enrollment, I have to take the new premiums out in August for August payrolls because we pay a month in advance.
I think we certainly ought to look as to whether these people are in breach of contract rather than be held hostage for three years for this.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I have had that exact conversation with Mr. McRoberts. We can do a site on failure to perform and be out in 90 days. We can just walk away within, give them notice in six months and be out. It's complicated because there's also a non-competitive clause that has to be worked around. So we're exploring those options, but we've got to have something for the employees. And the timing on this really gave us, as Ms. Presley stated, gave us no option. We, they have the enrollment period is coming up within a couple of weeks. They've actually pushed that back so that we could have this discussion tonight. But yeah, we certainly, I have communications with them where they readily admitted they did not do what they were supposed to do. So we're in a good position as far as that goes. However, we're still bound by a contract and we have to see what we need to do to get out of that contract.
Madam Chair, I may have missed something somewhere. Can't blame that on the COVID fog. But I thought when we, sorry. I thought when we changed contracts, that we were going to a yearly bidding process.
That, that is the, that, but the broker was supposed to go out yearly and seek bids. That's what they didn't do. They just rolled us over into the same program that we found the first, it was found the first year and went with that.
All right, can we get, is there any way to get a estimate, estimate on if we challenged it with the attorney? And then the benefits of waiting six months?
That's the options we're looking at. Are we better off to get out in 90 days? Are we better to get out in six months? But in that, in that time period, yes, we would need to start putting together personal opinion. I'm not so sure that a broker's our best bet. We might be better off to go and shop it direct. I know, I know you all.
I don't disagree.
I know you all had good experiences to some degree with the prior broker, but for some reason, there was a desire to move and look somewhere else. And it was great.
Because it had never been bid it out?
It was great last year.
Any more questions from the Presley? So our options are, the employees themselves can incur the full premium increase. The county can incur the full premium increase. Always, county will split 50/50 with employees. And that, that option, the 50/50 option, is an additional, what, $26,356.20 a year? Any motion?
I don't see why we have any choice at this late date.
The choice is to let the employees incur the expense, or we share, or we do it all or we share it with them?
Do you want to split it 50/50?
That's the staff's recommendation, is to split it 50/50.
You mean the staff recommends splitting it 50/50 instead of us paying them all? That's okay. I'm joking. But yes, I.
That's certainly, that's certainly an option. You have three options.
I don't like it, but I move to approve the FY2023. I don't like it, but I move to approve the FY '23 group health insurance renewal that's presented utilizing the employer/employee 50/50 split on proposed increased premiums.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would only ask one question. We just gave a raise. Are we, and we don't know what's going to happen with the budget. We got to take care of our employees. This is as sharp of a double edged sword as you will ever get. But I can't see where you can't ask the question, because this is taxpayers' money. Do we, with that 5% raise that everybody got, do we let them incur? I think the question has to be asked. I know it sounds ugly, but this is an ugly situation. Yeah, I see that.
One thing that I would like, if we go with this 50/50, is to specify, this, this is not a year after year, this is a one-time event, that we're not commit to incurring additional expense on an ongoing basis. A lot's going to depend on the due diligence for seeking other.
Mr. Vaughn, could your motion add that wording to where it would be?
A one-time event?
Yeah, contingent upon.
Add that to it.
Yeah, contingent upon a new contract or a new broker, whether, because it could happen in six months. It might not be a year. So, okay.
Okay.
So we have the motion and a second.
And I'll second, yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we're going with the one-time 50/50 split with the employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Request for real estate tax exemption help.
Yes, ma'am. You have some communications that started to me from the Commissioner of Revenue. Mr. Hoag, President of Helping Every Life Prosper, has requested that the property that they own in Blackstone be exempted from property tax. I've spoken with Mr. Hoag, I've gotten a copy. I don't have it with me in the packet, but I do have a copy for the record of their 501(c)(3) filing. The requirements of Section 58.13651 set out seven requirements. They obviously have met those requirements. They, if you go through that list, there's a requirement that they're not involved in alcohol, that the owners and operators of the establishment are not benefiting in any monetary way. They meet all those requirements. He's also provided some background documents on what they do in their, in their community. Therefore, staff would recommend that you take those actions that are necessary to relieve the tax relief, but those actions include a public hearing. And I would offer that you set that public hearing for your August meeting as you determine the August meeting to be.
Do we know how many 501(c)(3) organizations own real estate that are subject to county taxation?
The Commissioner of Revenue happens to be here.
So do we know how many 501(c)(3) organizations own real estate that is subject to county taxation? So are we setting a precedent without?
It's located. Exactly where is it located?
Mr. Vaughn, it's on the bean, what I call the bean rack.
Is it beside the Herb Cottage? Is that the new church?
I don't, I will tell you this, like, when I, when I came in, I hit the light, turn left like I'm going down to the bank. It's on the left-hand side. It's a very small, it's almost an alleyway-sized building, very, very narrow.
Because.
314 South Main Street, Mr. Vaughn.
That's the, next to the old gas station, old Exxon gas station, right there. Ain't helping with the distributing food, because you're thinking about the other one. There's, there's a, help something up on the right beside there. It is something right there. But I believe this one is the one down that they do the food distributions at. That's what I, I think it is, a little small building adjacent to the old Nodaway Publishing Company building or something right there.
I guess I'm just wondering, if we do this, are we going to be willing to go through this and give the same consideration to every 501(c)(3) entity that owns real estate? I guess maybe finding out how many there are would be.
I was going to ask if we could possibly postpone this till next month and get that information? And make a informed decision.
That'd be fine.
We can do that. You want to take formal action to defer on this matter?
Move to defer until next month's meeting.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer this item as discussed until next month's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So housing rehabilitation.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, we have a request from the Town of Blackstone to utilize $50,000 in an existing fund that was established a few years ago that was the result of two grants, housing improvement grants, one in Burkeville, one in Crewe. This is that grant program where folks are making payments on very low interest loans. That fund is up to $121,471.76 at the close of June. The, there is some income coming in, about $1,600. Obviously, a $50,000 donation or contribution to this effort would leave $71,000. And again, money's still coming in. Again, this grant started over in Burkeville. Another grant came in in Crewe. Blackstone has a very, I've spoken with the folks at the Department of Community and Housing Development. Blackstone has a very aggressive housing redevelopment improvement program, which I don't believe the county has ever contributed to. The money's there, so staff recommendation is to transfer $50,000 from this 301 planning fund that the county has for the purposes of rehabilitation of a home in Blackstone.
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize the county administrator to execute the program income plan agreement between the Town of Blackstone and Nodaway County, and thus release, for the purpose of housing rehabilitation, $50,000 from the 301 planning grant.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. VACO meeting in relation to August regular meeting date change.
Yes, ma'am. VACO's County Official Summit is August 18, 2022. It'll be in Roanoke. If the board wishes to attend, I would anticipate travel on the 17th, but obviously, there's a conflict and need to determine if the board wishes to move their meeting back to the 25th.
All right, so the question is whether we want to move, change the August meeting from the 18th to the 25th to accommodate the VACO meeting that's going to be on the 18th?
Yes. I say yes. I move that we move our August meeting from August 18th to August 25th.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and the August meeting is scheduled now for August 25th. American Rescue Plan, ARPA?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, we have received our ARPA funds. Our total ARPA funds, and if you've got a kind of a breakdown sheet, the third, third item on this, this item. In round one, you received $1,479,318.50, and you committed 1.3 million to broadband. Now, that's the first round of VADI grants. You entered that contract a couple of months ago, no, just, I believe, yeah, a couple of months ago, and that contract was actually for 1.1 million. Staff has suggested that you retain the residue of $379,318.50 to ensure that the penetration level of customers that sign on to the broadband is met. So that if it's not met, you have to cover the difference. Now, the round two has just been received. It's the exact same amount, $1,479,318.50. There are some items that staff would recommend you take action on and release some of this funding. And those items are $200,000 for the tanker fire apparatus for the Crewe Volunteer Fire Department, which is a request. $10,000 to assist Burkeville in the water line extension, also by request, but this water line extension is for the animal shelter. And approximately $20,500, that's an estimate, for a handicap ramp for the Office of the Commissioner of Revenue. In total, that would be $230,500, leaving $1,248,818.50. Staff recommends further consideration of the following. In other words, no action this evening. Crewe Library Roof Repair, a handicap ramp for the EOC, Public Safety Training Center, Cox Road Water Line Extension, handicap, sorry, got a double on there, sorry about that. Broadband, and broadband expansion. We would also recommend deferral of a request for $200,000 from STEPS for a shelter. Most other communities that have been approached on that request have declined. There's a timeline there by which you have to act. Now, both first round and second round funds have to be committed by the end of 2024. The summer of 2025 is the expected completion date of broadband round one. And you have to spend all funds by the end of 2026. I'd like to defer, if I could, to Mr. Zodi. He has some conversations today with Lon Wiltchel, with River Street, concerning the status of the second round of VADI grants.
Thank you, Mr. Costin. What Lon and I had spoken about was about the 2023 VADI Round Two. What you all have already designated for round one was what Mr. Costin mentioned. I did ask what our percentage would be, the county's match for this particular round, round two. And he said he's still waiting for the engineering to provide his cost, and then he can, at that time, give us an estimate of what the match would be, the percentage be required of the county. And to build on that, I've been keep, weekly keeping tabs on the VADI site through DHCD regarding the application, because applications are supposed to open up in August, and there's still not, the application's not on there. Not that I'm an impatient person, but it's really starting to get me a little upset. But regardless, that's really the update I have right now for round two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry, I don't have more information.
Madam Chair, I got a quick question for you, because some of these things were deferred here. Should we schedule a work session sooner rather than later to see where the board is coming together on some of these items? And see what may be available, because I see some of these items here, and someone may have a suggestion to add more to certain line items. It's just, just a thought. But I'd also like to move that staff be authorized to release funds from Nodaway County's Round Two ARPA allocation in the amount of $200,000 to the Crewe Volunteer Fire Department as a contribution towards the purchase of a tanker truck. I'd like to add to that motion for the, if we could have the funds written and released on 7/22/2022, which would be tomorrow. And speaking to that motion, Madam Chair, I see more of a benefit if Crewe has that money, the sooner the better, in their account, where it could garner a little bit of interest, where they could pay it forward to.
What's the rush about tomorrow?
Well, I was just saying, just go ahead and get it, get it to them. The sooner it gets in their account, the sooner it starts generating interest for the fire department.
I mean, so.
You know why I'm laughing, don't you?
Madam Chairman, the, the first thought that comes to my mind is Ms. Tomer is out tomorrow. I know at least tomorrow morning. She's not here this evening. She's attending the Women's and Municipal Government Leadership Institute, which I understand Ms. Hudson was the lunch speaker for today. But getting, getting the check cut may be an issue. And if it's cut in the afternoon, if I'm wrong, basically, it's, if it went to the bank in the afternoon, it would be Monday, where it was really recorded as being in the bank.
All right, all right, well, then I would just.
I'll take, take that off, and I'll second that motion to give Crewe the $200,000 for the tanker.
I've just been texted by Ms. Tomer. She can't write that check until Monday.
Okay.
And when other fire departments request, please don't be quick to say no. I couldn't miss that.
All right, so the motion that's on the floor is to release funds from the Round Two ARPA in the amount of $200,000 to the Crewe Volunteer Fire Department. Okay. We have a second?
Yep. I second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Motion and a second. Any more discussion about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now we'd be looking for a motion to authorize staff to release funds in the amount of $10,000 to Town of Burkeville for the water line extension to the new shelter.
I will, so move on that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Finally, we need a motion related to the 20,500 installation of the ramp.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize release of funds in the amount of $20,500 for installation of an aluminum ramp for the Commissioner of Revenue to meet ADA requirements. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. On this item, do you all want to roll a discussion on the ARPA funds into the work session for the, with the Commissioner of Revenue on personal property? Or would you rather kind of separate?
That would be, that would be good.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I think the sooner the better. I mean, we can get a mobile phone meeting, what the intentions are.
Okay, all right.
Let's see, Mr. Rourke, you're on the agenda for economic development discussion?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. My first consideration to put to you guys tonight would, and some of these are just questions, some are just, you know, just a conversation here. I'd like for the board to consider re-establishing the Economic Development Committee, which would have voting members from each town and the Board of Supervisors, pretty much the way we had it set up before. And also, moving on, the, solar's been a big issue here in the county, obviously. You've all felt that, but just for consideration, I had talked to some of the people most vehemently opposed to solar, and a suggestion would be for the county, for the county to own a project, which means the county doesn't just get revenue sharing, that the county gets all available revenue or can lease the land for the project. This would be out at, the county's property out at Fort Pickett, which the county owns over 1,000 acres. Also, this will help decrease the need for tax increases for capital projects. It's not. It's not near citizens' properties, pretty much out of sight. Right now, there's not a lot of economic development opportunities, so the county projects will most likely come from tax increases. This still allows other solar projects that can be applied for and challenged, also additional revenue for emergency services and schools. But my want is for all Nottaway citizens to be on board with ways for the county to generate revenue to help offset tax increases. Now, again, this is not that I'm saying I'm for or against solar. This is just some discussions that we had, that, you know, the county has property out there. It's not farmland. You know, it's surrounded by federal property. Also, landfill study. I feel like this needs to be completed sooner rather than later. Could potentially be revenue stream dependent on the results from the study. We all know just a couple of points here. It takes five years to get application approved. Each sale has five to seven year lifespan at 50 tons per day. And currently, we're averaging for the year over 60 tons per day, which puts us closer to the five-year lifespan. We're over a year into the new sales. The common sense tells us that if we apply for a permit today to construct a new landfill, by the time the application is approved, we'll be in our last sale. And then, how long does construction take? With the new rates, we can pretty much, I'd leave that out because that doesn't apply anymore. But I just feel like we need this study now to give the county officials the best new, relevant, and up-to-date information on how to best move forward with the handling of the county's solid waste removal. Also, I think we need to be considering, could the county purchase new land for economic development and be ahead of other counties by prepping the sites as construction-ready? Now, I reference that back to the November VACO conference that we had. I attended an economic development session that they had. And that was one of the, their selling points, that you have manufacturers and big retailers landing in Virginia looking for prepared sites. And when they say prepared sites, not that it is, the tree's been cut, but they're looking for water, sewer, electricity, ready to build. They say that that puts us well ahead of the curve. So it's just, again, just a consideration. And I think that the county must take a more proactive approach to assisting all three towns with economic development. Towns and county alike need better relations toward each other. And I referenced the Sandy River Water Line issue that's going on. However, after that meeting the other night, I think that was a wonderful meeting, headed in the right direction, good discussion. And but I would say this, why would any developer come here to build when they see the public perception is that the county was turning its back on one of its own towns and potentially sending millions of dollars in future revenue out into the neighboring county when a realistic solution exists to keep all revenue in the county? I just feel like too often, people say, well, that's a town problem, that's a county problem, and we're just not getting everybody together. Because as you all know, they're all Nottaway citizens. I mean, that's just easy to say there. The next one is, it's a little bit difficult. I just think we need to find ways to strengthen the school system. You know, between the public perception and the decline in student numbers, loss of accreditation, the, and like I said, this is hard to discuss, but the potential pending lawsuits, potential loss of funding from the U.S. Department of Education, and of course, the crimes against students. We need to work with the school board and fix these issues because there, again, who would want to move here and enroll their kids in the school with these ongoing issues? And saying that the problems exist in all schools across the country just doesn't work anymore. I care about what happens here in Nottaway to its citizens, young and old. And I feel we must find solutions to our people and stop looking for excuses to just remain status quo. Because when you're looking for excuses, you're not looking for solutions. You know, fix our problems and let us not accept that that's just the way it is because the media or someone said it. We can no longer operate efficiently by keeping our heads in the sand. And we can't fix what we don't acknowledge. And the first step is to swallow our pride and coming together to truly identify issues and put forward some solutions. Now, this one I really like, and I hope everybody else loves. I would like the Board of Supervisors to take a look at possibly doing some sponsors of a festival series and use the revenue to support emergency services. This could avoid possible tax increase. And I'm thinking more along the lines, of course, this is just conversation. Start with two, maybe increase to six, one a month. Just about all the county's festivals are gone. And I'm just asking to, let's look into taking the lead and getting this turned around and use the profits for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. That's just a few of my random thoughts. And I, at any time, would be more than willing to really sit down and hammer this home and see where we can go. I mean, I remember a time when you could go out to Fort Pickett and, I mean, they had big acts out there at the airport. You know, you have a entry point there where you could go in and you're not hitting the main gate. You know, Hooper Park, I don't know if they'll accommodate anything like that anymore. But there's a lot of money that could be made. I mean, the Crew Fire Department, their biggest fundraiser was the Chicken Festival. And y'all think about, y'all know what we're missing. Chicken Festival, Texas Festival, Seafood Festival, all of those are gone. And most counties around ain't doing it. I think it could be a big drop. Just food for conversation, to try to find additional funding for emergency services or the county's needs. That's all I got. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Rourke, the item that was added, donation request?
Oh, yes, ma'am. There was an email that came in from Ms. Marsha Martin. And I'll just hit the easy part of this here. She sends the email that she stated that, I understand that the past practices had not been, had been not to make contributions to organizations. However, she was reaching out for the youth of Nottaway County. As you are probably aware of, Nottaway Youth Recreational Association Ponytail Age Division has advanced to the World Series in Louisiana at the end of the month. This is a special and memorable time for our girls, but it's an extremely expensive endeavor. The girls are in the process of raising money, but the time is tight to get all donations. The cost for the 12 players and coaches to attend the World Series and represent not only Virginia but Nottaway County is upwards of $25,000. There are many associated costs from uniforms, hotel rooms, food, gas, entry fees, et cetera, for our families to endure. It is always a difficult feat, but especially difficult now with the rising cost of the items. Hotel rooms will cost approximately $16,000, meals $6,000, and approximately $7,000 for gas for a trip over 1,000 miles away. I am sure you are aware of Blackstone Rec and Crew Burkeville Rec joined and created one Youth Recreation Association called Nottaway in 2021. This is our second year of an extremely successful endeavor to combine. Many do not know that the Recreation Association is a 100% volunteer organization providing for the youth in Nottaway. Without the association, there would not be basketball, baseball, softball, soccer, volleyball, and many other opportunities for the children to participate. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend putting in form of a motion that the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors pay $5,000 to the Nottaway County Youth Recreation Association for their upcoming appearance in the World Series for the Ponytails Division in Louisiana. And the funds would be, to be released as soon as possible.
Mr. Rourke, put a motion on the floor for a $5,000 donation to the Youth Recreation Association for the World Series. Anybody want to make a second to put it on the floor for discussion? So the motion dies for lack of a second. All right, now we move on to consent items. And Ms. Tomer's not here. Mr. Costin, do you?
You have the general matters here, the June expenditures of all funds, listing of FY '22 committed obligated funds, a budget adjustment for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $5,713.84, along with a budget adjustment, again, for the Sheriff's Office for $115.25. If the board has any questions, I'll struggle to answer them. But we would recommend you accept these items.
Any questions?
No. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any questions about correspondence or information items that are in the package? Mr. Costin, County Administrator's report.
Yes, ma'am. Just for the record, I'd like to note that Mr. Bowen was absent this evening due to a critical maintenance issue at his place of employment, which he oversees that particular area. I have nothing to add from the, to the written report. I would like to note, as Mr. Rourke indicated, we went to the VACO Region One, Region Four joint meeting, and were able to present. I provided a copy of the talking points that were given, which basically addressed comprehensive, comp board funding for positions. As far as, I'd like to go back on the solid waste study. It's come up a couple of times this evening. We've got three significant RFPs in the hopper right now. The first, we got a tremendous boost from the CRC in doing a regional reassessment RFP. The, your recently passed budget includes the start for the reassessment. It is due January 1, 2024, which means it has to be worked in 2023, which means you really have to start it in '22. The regional RFP incorporates all the jurisdictions that have reassessments coming up. As luck would have it, Nottaway is up front. And so the Commissioner and I and Ms. Tomer really went through that, gave them some feedback, got a draft back, gave more feedback. That RFP will probably be on the streets September 1. I would anticipate the board being asked to, in October, to participate in a interview with a couple of ranked firms and then make a selection so that the work can start in November. The other RFP that we're working on is for the audit. I've given you all the draft on that one. Because of the jump with the CRC with the reassessment, we'll be able to pick up the solid waste a lot sooner than we had anticipated. And I hope to have something to you all September, October timeframe. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
So what would you estimate as a timeline for getting an RFP out on this landfill study?
Getting it out sometime, if the board, once it's drafted, reviewed by legal, if the board wants to take a look at it, I think we did that with the, gave you all a chance to look at and review the legal one. I would think no later than October.
Okay.
And I'll say mid-October.
Comments from members of the board? Mr. Vaughn?
I don't have anything. Madam Chair, the only thing I'd like to say is that everybody up here makes their own decisions. And we answer to the citizens, and we answer to our higher power. And I wish, I wish someone had at least seconded that motion for discussion for the REC Association. Those children deserve better than that. I just, I'm sorry, I'm not going to say anything else. I don't want to say anything ugly, I'm sorry.
Well, John, I would like to respond to John.
Yeah, please.
We did as a business. And I don't see any reason why supervisors here, they choose to give a personal donation that they can.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we've always done in the past. We've given a personal donation. We do not have a fiduciary responsibility to the Recreation Association, but we do to the schools. So we just haven't been doing it. We have always gone into our pockets, and each one of the board members would contribute maybe $50, $100 to that.
You mentioned, you weren't, you didn't vote in favor of this, but we made donation to the Juneteenth celebration.
That's why Chairman Vaughn voted against that. Because I knew, and this is just only at the tip of the iceberg, there are many organizations that's going to come to this board.
I just, and I mean, and I'm not saying that anybody's right or wrong. I'm saying, Mr. Vaughn, you're right. I just think that sometimes, too often, we get mired in what is perceived as, we've always done it like this, so if you do it for one, you do it for all. And I just don't feel like that is the correct way of doing business moving forward. Because I think you always look at your situation, your current situation during any individual request. And anybody that makes requests should be aware of that request at the same time. My thought process on this was, we were getting ready prior to tonight's actions to take over a million dollars away from the citizens. I felt like we could give $5,000 to these children for this because this is like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I also feel like it gives the children out in the public the incentive to say, hey, look, this can be big. You know, they just have to work harder, prepare harder, practice harder, and listen to their coaches and their parents, and they can have this opportunity too. I just, I mean, we've got, we've got over $5 million in the LRA that just sits and continues to grow. I mean, we were looking at taking over a million dollars from the citizens. I just, I don't know. I just felt like it, and I mean, that we brushed that aside and didn't have any conversation about even a lesser, a lesser amount. I just, man, I think it's going to send a hard message to the citizens out there and the children as well. But, you know, like I said, this, I'm not trying to shame y'all, and I'm really not. I just, I'm sorry that it didn't go through.
As far as, Mr. Costin, do you think next month we could have a report on the update of the status of the website?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
All right, so now we'll entertain a motion to enter a closed session.
I move that the Board of Supervisor in Nottaway County, Virginia, join into closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-371188 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by Nottaway County regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding insurance and water service options. 2.2-371183, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property. Where discussion is in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically property in or near the town or crew. And 2.2-3711A1, assignment and performance of the specific county employees specifically relating to the personnel matters not pending in county administration.
We have a motion to enter in closed session. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting, we convene closed session.
Right. You come back. You wouldn't be the only one.
It's kind of dim in here. Maybe, maybe, maybe that's why.
All right, this meeting will reconvene in open session. Ms. Simmons, will you provide a motion for certification of closed session?
Whereas the Nottawee County Board of Supervisors has convened an executive meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this Board of Supervisors that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the Nottawee County Board of Supervisors hereby certify to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting, which comes out of Virginia law, were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening to the executive meeting were here discussed or considered by the Board of Supervisors; and three, no action was taken in the executive meeting regarding the items discussed.
Mr. Costin, will you roll call the board?
Yes, ma'am. Supervisor Ward, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Simmons, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Vaughn, do you so certify?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, do you so certify?
Yes.
With Mr. Bowen being absent, the vote is four, certifying with one absence.
Okay. The Board has reviewed and discussed contract extension and related terms for County Administrator Costin. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding that contract as presented, which extends Mr. Costin's employment for three years with a 5% salary increase.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
All right, well, the motion passes and Mr. Costin's employment has been extended per the contract as presented.
Thank you.
And now we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
You pass that so I can borrow it again next month.
Oh, she has the other one, too.